Good evening all, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Morse usually leads us in prayer, I don't see him here tonight. Will you lead us, Sherri, when it's time? Okay. So if we could all rise. And Sherri will lead us in prayer and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
You okay? We recognize you. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come together and take care of city business in the way that it should be. Bless the mayor and our attorneys and everyone that's here today and help us do the right things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got nervous, I don't know why.
Rebecca, if we can get a roll call, please.
Dan Martin.
Here.
Caleb Fluggie.
Here.
Amy Long.
Here.
Sherri Gaskell.
Here.
Rose Beech.
Here.
Matt Brown.
Where's Mr. Brown?
And so we have a few announcements. April 12th is Saturday at 11:00 will be our Easter egg hunt at the Walton City Park. It begins at 11:00 a.m. On the 26th will be our grand opening at Owens Lake Park and that'll be at noon.
That's exciting.
It is.
That's exciting.
Enlisted here, May 13th, so that's the day of our May council meeting. At 6:15 will be our event planning meeting. So feel free to come tonight. We weren't as busy with the meeting and thank you all for being here. We weren't as busy with the meeting as usual. We have the Easter egg hunt and the lake, we're in a good spot, but next month we'll really be diving into Old Fashioned Day, so that's a lot of fun. So if you'd like to come and join us, please do.
That's quick.
We'll open it up for citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that has anything to share, questions to ask? Welcome, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead. If you will state your name, I apologize.
Ed Harshinger.
It's nice to meet you in person, Ed.
We have a present for social media. We have a present for social media. This is concerned residents. I don't think it's where they have it is the good place. I mean, I don't understand why you put it right there.
Understood, and I'm glad that you came because it's important to answer those questions. Mr. Bogan, our engineer, he worked with, well, I can let you explain if you don't mind, like why that spot was chosen.
Sure. So in advance of this, we had the county go out and do speed studies and they got the first straightaway coming off of Walton City Road and then the second one that ended up being installed. And that area had higher speeds in general. Driver speeds they measured were higher in that section. So we placed it there and tried to be mindful of the business entrances and all that. There's several businesses that are around that area, but the intent is to try and address that speed problem that we see.
And so initially someone, many in your neighborhood, I'm assuming you live in North Walton Point, right? So many in the neighborhood reached out stating that that was a drag strip, the straightaway, and I understand, I read your comments online, how it can be advantageous to have them in the residential area because of the kids at play, right?
They should be, honestly, because there's people who get that harder than 30, 40 miles an hour and there's kids playing.
Understood.
And there's kids on Mullen Road, you know, I mean...
Understood. It's still a safety concern as far as traffic though, right? Because people are pulling in and out of there and if folks are truly drag racing, we've had several complaints that people are racing that road. And I believe in the speed study it showed that they were double digits over the speed limit, so. And if I can address too, that there's a high demand around town for the speed humps. And so as council, I believe...
I don't mind speed humps. If they were in the neighborhood, it's fine. It's just where you guys placed it, it doesn't make sense.
Well, the good news is they are portable.
There's no kids.
But there's...
I know there's...
If someone's going 70 in a 30, that's a problem.
Right. Where's the police at?
Well, they can't be there, here's Major Mark right here tonight, but they can't be there 24/7, right? So when the cat's away, the mice play and, you know, it would be great if the police officers were tucked up behind a building that could catch that behavior. That'd be awesome. That's not been our experience. But I think that, and again, I'm glad you are here just to talk about this because I think council, as we begin our budget talks, those speed humps are over $8,000 apiece. And what we hear a lot of is, "We want them, we want them, we want them." We put them down and now it's like we've stolen someone's first child, right? Because the people are not happy now that they're in. That is a social media measurement. Is that a true read on how the folks really feel? I'm unsure. But I understand your concern with, it could have been placed in a residential area that continues to keep our children safe rather than right there on Mullen. But the reason it was placed on Mullen, it was requested on Mullen by several, but also the speed, the speed traffic study that was done, just saying that the rate of speed there is accessible.
And we didn't actually do a speed study back in the neighborhood. That wasn't pulled up in the complaints, it was all in the business section.
I mean, it just makes sense. There's kids that play out in the front.
Yeah, and it can be such speed hump in every street, every subdivision in Walton. I'm thinking of North Point and the entry is an angle on the way up the hill, so I don't know where you would put one there. And other than that, it's a street. So then we'll put one on your streets and not on the other 32 streets and how the kids play on, I mean, they're $8,000 apiece. So I get the concern, but it's like where else would you put it if you're thinking Mullen all the way into subdivision except for where they put it? I don't know where else you would put it.
Well, and some have requested, right, for speed humps to be at an intersection. That's not the intended purpose of the speed hump at a stop sign because folks are running stop signs. So we're open ideas, you know, and I've got them from Major Mark tonight as he speaks to us, I've got it on here today where, just to share with him another complaint where folks are experiencing high speeds through the residential areas. But besides alerting our partners with Boone County and the potential of putting in a speed hump in the residential area, I mean, I don't have any more answers for what we can do.
Do all those, does your subdivision have a slow children to play sign?
I doubt those are eight grand, right? Is there any need to put signs like that? Do you have one of those?
They don't... They, but, I mean, honestly, that's, I'm being honest.
I agree, because we had a gentleman come to our caucus meeting for High School Court and there's a child with disabilities there. We are looking to put a sign there because hopefully that sign will get someone's attention. But I agree with you, I think we become numb to the signs, right? Probably not numb to a speed hump though, where you have to slow down and adhere.
You don't want to.
But please understand that it is portable.
Even if it's on Mullen Road, it shouldn't be in the subdivision instead of out there. There's nothing, I mean, I know, I'm worried about kids.
And I appreciate that, but there is high speed there.
My boy plays out in the front and there's people going, ours is 20 miles an hour. And I yell at them when they go faster than 20 miles an hour because they go, they go 30, 40 miles an hour. I live right on top of the hill on Rocky Point and they fly through there. And especially when they're going down too for kids, it's a hill.
My ask would be allow time, I know it's new and probably frustrating for some and welcomed by others, but allow time because it is portable and if we find that it's not serving you all in the best way, that we can absolutely move it.
I mean, it just makes sense for kids' safety. The other, I mean, there's nobody up there playing, so I'm just worried about the kids. Because I see it all the time and then the ball goes out and if somebody's going 30 miles an hour, they're gonna get hit, they'll get killed probably.
Absolutely. And I am not going to disagree with what you're saying. And there was such a high demand, this, this speed hump was supposed to go in another neighborhood. It was second on the list as we began all the speed hump talk.
And I worry, and another thing, like I said, every time I go on Mullen, there's semi trucks parked there. They're unloading stuff on Mullen Road. They shouldn't be going there.
Then I would, I would invite you to reach out to the non-emergency line with Boone County and alert the police of that because we can't, we can't police that.
It's just like D and E, they drop something off, they're right in the hill, so you have to go around it. So they shouldn't be unloading stuff on the street there. And there's signs that says, "No parking on the street," and they do it. Even the buses do it if they're hurled. They do it. Trust me.
Okay, so the buses you could call the school, the semis you could call the county, right?
I've seen it multiple times. They sit there because they're early for the route.
Understood.
And they sit there and it shouldn't be sitting there because there's signs all over the place that says, "No parking."
I'm sure Dr. Baker would address that if you were to reach out to the school. And closing with the speed humps, again, if you will just be patient with us and allow it a month or two, just to see how it, how it works on Mullen. And again...
It don't bother me, I just, I think it should be better than the community.
And again, that's going to be part of our, our budget talks, is if, are we going to do more of these, right? Everybody asks for them, but when they're put in, it doesn't feel as good. And again, I'm not sure that's a true sample on social media.
I mean, I just, like I said, I don't care if they're in here.
I'm just glad I got to meet you in person.
I mean, I can play along with, I mean, that's...
Absolutely, you have every right to, but more important is that you're here and I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? Yes, sir.
John Wainwright. Hello, Mayor.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Just a couple of callouts. We have Wake Up Walton on the 3rd.
We do have Wake Up Walton, May 3rd.
May 3rd, so there's a call out there to folks.
So if you're not familiar with Wake Up Walton, it's what the school does with our community. They go to those who need help, whether they're elderly or handicapped, and they help prepare their yards for the summer.
Yep.
May 3rd.
Yes, May 3rd, says the morning of, so if you've never participated and you want to either be, one, you want to be a participant, someone who participates and does the refreshing, or if you're a senior, you can call, reach out to the school and be one that has your stuff refreshed. So there's a call out there. Also, that same weekend, there's Best Way, has an extra pickup on Saturday, no cans, just big stuff. So beautification incoming, same's like Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely. That same day on May 3rd, thank you for calling those out. The Gaines House is doing a cleanup too. So Paula is a volunteer at the Gaines House and she's asking for volunteers if anyone wants to go help at the Gaines House. That's an opportunity. And then, yes, thank you for mentioning the spring cleanup. So the dates on the spring cleanup, so what this means for our residents is that from Thursday to Saturday, you can take your big items to the Public Works on High School Court and use the dumpster at no cost. And then to John's point, on the 3rd, there's the extra curb side trash collection that does not include cans, that's only big items. So if you put your cans out there, the garbage will not be picked up. Welcome. Sorry there wasn't a chair laid out there for you all. So we're right here at the end of citizens' comments. Do you all have anything that you'd like to bring up? Questions, comments?
Oh, one more thing, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
And then the 4th, the 4th is going to be the Farmer's, first Farmer's Market.
That is the case, which we need to talk about restrooms on that. So to John's point, May 4th, we're going to have, it's going to be the first Sunday of every month through the summer, but there will be a Farmer's Market right here in the parking lot of City Hall. The lady who's running it is the lady who ran it at the Verona Vineyards. So there's different types of vendors. We're excited about what it can be for our citizens. So, yes, so the first Sunday of each month will be Farmer's Market. Thank you, John.
And then they had, Chris Grubbs said we can park, or post and park there, is that correct?
So Peggy, who's in charge of the Farmer's Market, is supposed to reach out to Chris the weekend prior to make sure, so when we talk about Chris Grubbs, it's the funeral home across the way. We've reached out to see if we could use that for additional parking and Chris said as long as there was no service on that Sunday, there would be not, there would not be an issue. So she's committed to reaching out just to make sure. And we could put signage up here too for additional parking. Thanks, John. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Sorry. So I guess where I bring it up, they put the new speed hump in Mullen Drive.
Yes, sir.
Two of my cars will not make it over. It is too tall. My Mini Cooper, my Ford, both won't go over. I tried to go at an angle and I caved my car in my, fully in my vehicle. I was coming back to work.
Will you state your name?
James Bridges.
Okay, and so, I apologize, we just had the, I appreciate you coming and...
Sorry.
No, that's okay, we just had the speed hump conversation. As far as your car not going over, I saw some of the comments on social media. I know that there's a spot in between, right, and a spot on the end, there's no way to maneuver where you're taking...
So if you go on the spot of the end, it goes in the grass and I tried to go there and I just spun in the grass. Like if you try to go over enough for years, you go in the grass and I'm pretty much on the sidewalk because of the sign being right there. You can't like fully go over to the sign. You have to go, you have to try to maneuver around it and you're pretty much on the sidewalk.
So are your cars right now, they're not inside your neighborhood, they're on the other side of the speed hump?
My Ford's just sitting at the temp flex and my other car is in my garage. I remember this car is a Honda Civic, it won't go over it. My girlfriend, she went over the speed hump at 12 miles per hour and it, it was enough that it knocked her wheels in off, like in the car, she's getting 24, 40 yards. I headed five miles down with my truck and it fell to like, to the ground.
Mr. Bogan, do you have any?
Um...
This is our, that's our city engineer, Matt Bogan.
I get like the difference everything, it's just like being at 30 miles per hour is like you get that 30 miles per hour, your airbag is...
Well, that's why it's there, it shouldn't be, right, we shouldn't be ramping it. And actually Jonathan, your supervisor from Public Works, Jonathan, who was there installing today, and talking to them on the phone, it was, two people approached it that fast and it was as if they were ramping it, right? I mean, it is a speed hump, it is meant to reduce speed.
But the speed limit sign is like 10 feet before the hump.
Yeah, the sign's right where the hump is. It should, it should be up farther saying, "Slow down hump is," I mean, it's right where the hump is.
Understood, yeah, we can definitely look into changing the placement of...
It's, you give a, you know, indication, it's there.
Like you should know before you hit it.
Exactly.
Yeah, I get it.
Right where the speed hump is.
Okay.
So a couple of things I can respond to that. So the kids that we get, they're standardized from manufacturer, they're all supposed to be three inches high. That's what, you know, the market research has determined that cars can safely drive over without any damage. And they, early manufacturer though rated for 15 to 20 miles an hour is a safe speed slow down to the high. I don't get it dispute if you got something that rides a lot, but, you know, it might take less than that, but that's their, you know, they're supposed to be...
You know, you go off the side, right, you get here, like that, that would help.
Well, we've talked about those too, right? And you put those in, as you talked earlier, residential area, then folks are complaining because of the noise, because they do make noise, you know, so we've weighed that as well.
Yeah, and that's, those aren't really a...
You hear noise, you hear...
They're not.
...corns on the, um...
They're not.
The trains, so...
They're state mandated.
You may use them, so...
And those are really kind of different tools. The rumble strips are for dealing with if you're handling issues with people leaving the lane because they're crossing the center line.
I've seen stuff like that, huh?
Oh, okay, I know what you mean.
You know, like that, you know, I've seen it on there.
Yeah, those are an option too.
People slow down and they go to the top.
Not something we've priced yet, but... I would be able to go over at an angle and just break the whole side of the hump or like I was saying, drive my car. Sure. Get it to the house.
Have we had a corresponding complaint from Wildcat Run?
When they...
In the beginning.
Yeah, when they first went in in Wildcat, there was a rumble that slowly died down and now I have people contacting on a constant saying, "Can we get more on Wildcat?" You know, because it is residential and it, to your concern, right? The kids are at play, so.
I can see that. I mean, like I said, like Mullen, it's an industrial park, so it's...
But again, because the folks behind you weren't here when we discussed this, there's been complaints of drag racing, right, of just excessive speeds on Mullen. And those come from your neighbors. The city didn't just say, "Let's go take away all the fun on Mullen," right? So we were responding to complaints of high speed and excessive speed on Mullen. And again, a speed study was done. So because of that, we have the portable speed humps. This one was actually slated to go to another neighborhood, but because of the outcry of the citizens in that area, we decided that we would fast track Mullen, that it seemed to be a real issue.
Nobody knew it was coming, that's the thing.
I'm sorry?
Nobody knew it was coming, Bill, if you're installing.
I just saw them, they...
Exactly. I didn't know about it, so...
I would say that in any of our caucus or council meeting notes that you would find those discussions there too, we try to keep the citizens abreast of what's going on, right? And that's why you saw it on Facebook, because of that post. I'm pretty sure that we, there's another post out there that talked about upcoming speed humps, but probably not the placement. Open to ideas on that communication, right? I don't, I don't want you to feel like I'm not hearing what you're saying, but absolutely open to how we communicate those changes better.
Like I said, I don't have a problem with speed limits, this is where it's at, it should be community, it's like, I'm saying, there are people on Rocky Point, they go 30 miles an hour downhill, especially if it's downhill. And so, and there's kids playing out there.
Sounds like a good place to be, Major Mark.
I don't worry, I'm talking solid, I mean, I know it happens because I yell at people all the time and they do that, you know, and it's ridiculous. My boy plays out, you know, he shoots basketball. I tell him, try to look, you know, both ways, you know, and he did, he did, he got yelled at once, I was the neighbor, he went out without looking, you know, he's 10 years old, so, and he apologized to the neighbor, so, I mean, it's, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how fast he was going, but, you know, she probably went 20, 30 miles an hour, but still. He can go 30, 40 miles an hour, especially down.
Understood. And where the, this one was supposed to go, it was on Beddinger, down a hill, but Mr. Bogan educated me to, from my understanding, that they're primarily best on a flat surface, correct? Yeah, so the hills become a challenge.
Maybe get them rumble strips, I mean, I think it helps. I mean, it's probably cheaper to get them, you know, I guess they're rumble strips, is that what it is?
Yeah, there's probably a technical term for them.
Yeah. I just, I don't know what they are.
They'll have a terminology, but yeah.
I mean, they're not that, they're this big, I mean, they're not that tall, so it's not going to be any cars.
We're not against looking at other options and absolutely.
Yeah, because I want to be able to get to my house.
Well, that's important, right? And, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the fix is right now. Are we, to pull up a, a speed hump because his car's so low that he can't pass?
It's not even super low, it's just like, it's not like slamming on the ground or anything. It's just, you know, it's this far off the ground, but...
I went over with the BMW before I came here just so, right, and I'm, you see my car's out there, it's that high off the ground. I didn't have an issue. I would ask you, are your cars stock?
No.
I mean, that could be the problem, right? Isn't, you know, I doubt the...
What is that, legal?
I don't, I don't know the answer, but I, I mean, I'm sure the manufacturer that makes speed humps for safety doesn't, doesn't say, "Well, you know, we should keep them making slower for people who have to, who add extra stock cars, you know, stuff to their cars."
People lower the, lower the speed.
I totally understand, but I think the speed bump, people who build them, build them for safety, not for, not for pleasure. So maybe the issue might be, but I took a stock BMW 3-inch off the top over there, no problem. So, I mean, again, placements, that could be a discussion, but I mean, I took a regular road car.
What street do you guys live on? If we end up...
Somewhere point.
Somewhere point, okay. You have to say, if we do end up relocating it back into the neighborhood, is it still going to interact with us? Yeah. Really just depending if there is a way to, like if there's more on the side, you know, like in Cincinnati, they have them in like the middle and then you can kind of go around it on the side like the squares. You can still kind of, you still slow down and you have to kind of go to the side or climb first slide on that, but if I went straight and hit that, then you have... These are, in theory, they're supposed to operate the same way. Yeah, there's no, this must be on the side, right? Try going side, you know, in the grass or side door.
Well, and you stated on the one side, right, there's a sign, so we can fix that tomorrow, right, Jonathan? If we can move the sign closer to...
Is it the warning hump?
The speed hump sign is on the right, it's right next to the low level.
Those, you should have signs ahead of it, just slow down. Well, people, nobody, nobody knew about the sign next to the speed hump. We can, we can add advanced warning signs on top of that, but there have to be signs at the hump, so that's what we're... Signs ahead on both sides.
We can definitely get a sign that says, "Speed hump coming," or whatever, ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Bogan, do they have, so our unit that we have installed there is a two-piece unit, right? One for each lane? Is that correct or is it one continuous?
One all the way across.
One all the way across? Okay.
The one on, on Wildcat has a hump, I mean, a break in the middle, right?
Yeah, it should have, it's a straight all the way across. It is like on the university. I wonder if they sent us a different product this time? Because, yeah, it should have the gaps in the middle, if you can get one wheel, okay. I haven't been there since it got installed, so let me check that out and see if, you know, if they sent us the wrong thing. Hit it at 15.
At what, I'm sorry?
We said hit it 15 miles an hour.
Oh.
You go check it out.
Trying to get him to ramp it?
I mean, they're not that big, they're not this big, and then they still make noise, so, and they...
Okay, so Mr. Bogan's going to go check it out to make sure we've got exactly what it is we need. It should match the one on University that has a break in the middle. And we can't move the current sign because that's regulation, but we will absolutely order another sign that says, "Speed hump ahead."
I would say we want to send the speed sign on that.
Okay, yeah. And again, these are portable, so if they were to move, the signs can too.
It's just one way here, the one way out.
Understood, yeah. It makes it difficult.
That's the bad part.
And it's not in the clean where you can't go in temp flex and go around it? Like it's right after it, so you can't, you know, they'll use where you can pull it out. The speed hump is after that, so you can't go in temp flex and go around the speed hump? Like it'll still be right before you stop next to it.
I appreciate that. And I, and I appreciate your forward thinking, because we don't necessarily want to divert traffic, right, through a private...
Right, through a private business.
Yeah, but I understand that that could be your way around if, if you needed it to be.
Yeah, and like the speed of the sign being right there, like seeing that before the speed hump is kind of like a little bit...
Misleading?
Yeah.
That you can hit it at 30.
Yeah, like I could go 30, oh, no, I can't.
If you hit 30, then you, you hit that at 30, you're going to...
Okay, well...
When you did that speed study, was it from, like, is it, is it back there? Or is it residents from us? You don't know that, right?
It's both. Well, I mean, I, I, it, it doesn't tell me who is speeding, but they set the radar station out for at least a day, you know, at least 24 hours. I think they might have even done it.
Well, you could do, you could, you could see it, because the residents, you did it on some, is the factory or whatever.
Yeah, I, I want to say it was a Friday or Saturday.
It was during the week, because I was at work when they were out there.
Yeah, I mean, there's people that work at that, they don't get, they don't get, it's just like, people that work at that, in the factories right there.
We definitely have.
I look at it.
We have action items, takeaways, and Mr. Bogan, I appreciate you looking into that. We're going to get a sign that better states what's ahead. And I apologize for the inconvenience, right? This, it's not meant to inconvenience, but it seems like we may not have what we need, which is the one with the break in the middle.
There is a gentleman that works for the factory, and he, he, like, put his hand up to one of the lady, and he's like, dude, you're not going to make it over that, there's a loose speed hump, he told me, I'm rolling toward it.
Understood. Thank you for being here. Are there any other comments from the citizens?
Mayor, before you go on, you skip this.
Oh, I did, didn't I? Mr. Duncan's pointing out that I skipped something on the agenda, so we'll get there first. If we can, please get an approval for the minutes, that would be March 11th, council meeting, and the April 1st caucus meeting.
Motion to combine as one unit and approve as one unit.
I second that.
On the agenda.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Caleb Fleggy.
Yes.
Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Yes.
Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
And if we can, please get an approval for tonight's agenda.
A motion for approval.
Sir?
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Caleb Fleggy.
Yes.
Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Yes.
Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have Sheriff's Department Major Bill Mark. Thank you for being here, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our, our councils, got a copy of my report. There were 872 law enforcement events logged by the sheriff's office in the city of Walton in the month, month of March 2025. Some of those include six 911 hangups, deputies responding to 31 alarm drops, three attempts to locate, three animal complaints, deputies invested, investigated 19 auto accidents, two of which were with injuries. I think one of them was pretty dramatic, because it was on Main Street, and there was an overturned car. That was not speed-related, it was a mechanical problem with the car.
Wow.
Let's see, deputies logged eight business checks, they attempted 61 civil or criminal summonses, they investigated one criminal mischief, nine domestic disputes, seven reports of intoxicated persons, seven emotional crises, six complaints of juvenile trouble, deputies handled seven motor assist, they responded to one overdose, 20 requests for information, deputies logged 370 spot checks, handled 18 complaints of suspicious activity, we investigated one theft, deputies logged 21 traffic complaints, 38 traffic stops were done, they did one vacation check, handled 14 vehicle complaints, unlocked seven cars, five complaints of wounded persons, and all told, they issued 54 citations and arrested 18 people. Going back to the traffic complaints, we have a, a list that's distributed to all of our deputies, there's complaints from citizens or from, from local government about problems with the, in different areas of the county that require traffic enforcement. I was actually looking at the list on my phone while you're talking. We have a total of 40 locations logged for additional traffic enforcement throughout the county, seven of those are in the city.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Can we add an eighth?
It's all you on there.
Okay. Well, I've got High School Court, and the problem with High School Court is, right now, when the train's going, people cut down High School Court to bypass the train.
Yeah.
And a gentleman came to our caucus meeting and said they're doing that at high speed, so.
And on the topic of High School Court, after the meeting last week, because we were talking about motorcycles, I stopped about an eight-year-old on a motorcycle after I left the meeting last, last month.
So, what'd you do with him?
Uh, well, he, he walked the motorcycle home, and, and I talked to mom and dad.
Okay. Wonder if that's going to change behavior?
Hopefully, mom and dad can correct behavior better than the sheriff's office.
I'm, I'm surprised you caught one in action, we've been waiting for that.
About being in the right place at the right time.
It absolutely is. And then one other question would be, were you able to follow up with anyone about the possibility of locking up at the Owens Lake property?
If we can, table that until next month, so we can discuss it with the, the new sheriff when he takes office next week.
Understood, yes. Congratulations to the new sheriff.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything for Major Mark? You're appreciated, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Randy.
Generally, that, that's a, a location where we've had complaints of prior criminal activity, or, or areas where it's, maybe you go like a liquor store, or a business is open after hours, where it has the potential for, for legal occasion or criminal activity in it. So, it's just the, the deputy logs of dispatch that they visit that location at, at a time, which is really just, as a, as a visible deterrent. Thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. Mr. Matt Bogan? Chief S said he was at a bad accident, so he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight. He called right before the meeting, so.
Okay.
He wasn't in the accident, he was at an accident, yeah.
And, and, and that's in the Walt Fire District, but it's not in, it's, I don't know, Beaverton 42.
Oh, really? Beaverton 42. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So, we have an update about the speed humps, we'll discuss that, so. On the topic of road safety, we had a good discussion in caucus about the, the safety study we asked KYTC to do out here on Main Street. For the president's information, they came back with some things that they're going to work on, where they actually, they've already standardized all of the sign, the crosswalk signs, speed limit signs. There were also, they did a speed study on Main Street. They didn't tell me what their findings were, but they said they're forwarding them to Frankford to hopefully get some adjustments made on the speed zone through town. And then also, one of our requests was to add a couple of crosswalks at the post office and between Haley Lane and Kelly Cues. The state previously told us no on those, but in this latest study, they, they gave us the go-ahead to, to do those. So, we'll be applying for a growth permit to do that, to add those crosswalks, and also add the, the flashing beacons for both of the, for the pedestrian signs. So, that was one of the things we got from the town hall meeting we did, is that there's just, there should be some more locations for crosswalks in downtown, so we're working on that. Once we do that, the, the state will maintain the crosswalks, the natural, the driving, and then the city will maintain the, the flashing beacons. And then on our concrete nail repair contract, dirt works will be getting started on the next round of repairs. They've been trying to get to it sooner, but the weather just wasn't cooperating, so those are, are scheduled for next week. The locations on Nashburn, Shepherd, and Shoal and Trace. On the Owens Park, Rickler was out there yesterday, finalizing the trail, letting the surface course down. I'll probably run out there tomorrow, Thursday, and just do a walk-through and make sure there aren't any issues that need attention. If there are, I, I'm going to try and see if they can get them addressed before we open it, but, shorten it, we'll, we'll do it.
Thank you.
And then, you know, per discussion in caucus, we are going to hold off on the second half of the trail until we get some of the other site work done, just because it would be the area where we were working. And then a quick note on the, our stormwater program, we've got our annual report to the Division of Water, it's due next week. I'm getting that finished up. Mayor, I actually got a sheet on that, that I might need to sign off on, so, I'll get to the, after the news, everything. And that's all I've got. If there's any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Wow. Is that like a Ben's Lake, or is it just going to stop?
What's that?
It's a Ben's Lake.
Is it a Ben's Lake?
Mm-hmm.
If you're in a neighborhood, they stop it, it's the state.
It's a nice place. I can't wait for the gates to swing open and everyone into it.
I'm happy.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
Anything else for Mr. Bogan?
We're going to be about to pay a share, right?
Yes, sir. You still, if.
We're in, Randy? How are we supposed to, the news for our name, promise?
Oh, well, that's a good question, Randy. So, first, i- if, if you're an adult, and whatever law applies to you, you would have to have your fishing license, right? So, so, that's a question out there, I just want to make sure everyone knows, you have to be licensed to fish. The rocks.
It's great for that hollow break right there.
Yeah. Although they're beautiful when there's no weeds in them, right? They are ankle breakers.
They're pretty, but, uh, if you're.
I'm with you.
I'm, uh, you're very opposed. I just don't understand.
Well, and that decision was made solely by someone previously, so you would think that it would be a natural incline into, or decline into the water, right? That we didn't really need those decorative rocks, but there they are. I'm, and, and I, I'm sure Jonathan with Public Works can attest to that it'd be much easier to maintain if they weren't there, too, right? There are some places around the lake where there are no rocks, so, for those who are concerned about twisting an ankle, rolling an ankle on those rocks, and I would suggest that you, you know, fish on the bear side where there are no, no rocks, but we may have to make adjustments with the rocks being there in the future for different reasons. But yes, I, I can understand your concern with the rocks. I would say, find you a spot that's rock-free, because there are, right around the foundation of the house, there's two spots that are rock-free.
Rock-free.
And across from the foundation of the house. Yeah. So, those would be your best options, Randy.
I was curious, babe, let's go her, let's go fishing.
And we're still planning on adding a couple of piers eventually, right?
Yes.
To have those for fishing. So, yeah, as it is, it's still very much a work in progress.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Bogan. Appreciate you. Okay, so moving on to city business, first, we have proclamation 2025-01, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Walton, Kentucky, designating the week of May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. Mr. Duncan?
All right, I'm going to read it, it's short. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainability and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Walton, Kentucky; and whereas the, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens; and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Walton, Kentucky, to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities; and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, be it now proclaimed that I, she, Walton Mayor Terry Courtney, do hereby designate the week of May 18th to the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all, done this day in the city of Walton, whichever day she signs it.
That'll be today.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And thank you for being here, sir. And we'll move right along to Resolution 2025-03, a resolution of the city of Walton, Kentucky, listing the streets and roads which are in the city's street and road system for which the city maintains. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, whereas the Walton City Council agrees that the following roads on the attached appendix A are part of the city's street and road system, and whereas the Walton City Council agrees the following roads on the attached appendix B are not part of the city's street and road system, and there's only one that's on that list, that's over in Wal- the lake, Walton Lake. Now therefore be it resolved that the Walton City Council agrees the listed streets and roads on appendix A are part of the city's street and road system for which the city maintains, and those listed on appendix B are not part of the city's street and road system for which the city does not maintain. Attached to this is the appendix of all the city's streets that the city has accepted and/or maintains, and I believe the city engineer's gone over this list and made, made sure it was accurate. This is a list that is kept by the Northern Kentucky Area Development District, and they prompted us to adopt this from time to time, so we're asking for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Caleb Fleggy.
Yes.
Amy Long.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Yes.
Rose Beach.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
All right.
So, moving on to Resolution 2025-04, a resolution of the city of Walton, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Shacks Yak's LLC to provide kayaks at the city's Owens Lake Park for rent to the users of the park. And before we read all that, can I just share with them what our findings were last week?
Please do.
Thank you. So, for council, when we discussed the kayak rental, it was going to be six kayaks for two years, the city's cost would be $800, but the resident cost would be $15 an hour for a kayak, and we didn't feel that that was a good price. So, we pushed back, and if council's willing to approve, we came to an agreement that for six kayaks, we would have them at the lake for two years for $1,200, which is an additional $400, but the citizens' cost would be $5 an hour. So, we could, Mr. Duncan, that would be your piece?
Okay. All right. Whereas the city of Walton has been developing the Owens Lake Park and providing amenities for the users of the park, and whereas in addition to walking trails, fishing, picnicking, and other passive recreation, the city wishes to provide other options for users of the park, and whereas the mayor and city staff have worked out the terms of an agreement with Shacks Yak's LLC to provide kayaks at the city, city's Owens Lake Park for rent to the users of the park, and now therefore in consideration of the foregoing, be it resolved and so on, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a contract with Shacks Yak's LLC to provide kayaks at the city's Owens Lake Park for rent to the users of the park.
Mayor Courtney, so it's a two-year contract?
It is.
At the end of that, two years, we can choose to renew, or we can, we can walk away if, if so be it.
Yes, sir. And the liability lies with Shacks Yak's, what is it?
Shacks Yak's.
Shacks Yak's, so that if anyone were to steal or damage the kayak, then it would not be on the city, they, they would be handling that piece, so.
Have you all discussed the cost of extra, in case that's not enough at all? Have they told you all that?
No, we, initial talks were three, and we decided six would probably be more appropriate, and if we find that it's something that's really a hit, then we can absolutely reach back out. I'm sure that they would honor, the gentleman said that his wife's family is from Walton, and he wanted to do whatever it took to make it happen for the folks of Walton, so. Yes, sir?
Is there going to be an age limit on, on, on that though?
No, sir, but it would be like the bikes in Cincinnati or Covington, where you would have to use a smart app, so a child that comes there without a smartphone would not be able to do it, right, without that payment method on their, on their smartphone.
I don't think that's a good idea, because it's my opinion.
What part of it's not a good idea?
Anybody can run them, they should be, age limit or, or adult. Well, but you got, most kids have a track record. I don't know, I think a lot of kids got smartphones, and all they do is, I mean.
There has to be a payment method on the smartphone, yeah.
Do a lot of kids have a smartphone? I believe got, my boy's got a smartphone, so he's grown, so.
And maybe that's a piece that we implement, that you have to be a certain age, I'm not sure what that age looks like.
I mean, I think it would be a good idea, or, for adults, because, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, that's just my opinion.
And the other piece of that, right, if you're allowing your children to come to the lake, there's no lifeguard on duty, it will be swim at your own risk, so there is, the lake, there's no lifeguard on duty, it will be swim at your own risk, so there is, it's probably important that children who are maybe, there should be adult supervision, I'll leave it at that. John, did you have some?
Yeah, so, and so when you rent the kayak, you got a life jacket with it, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's the same thing, and again, I've got to be parents.
Now, how many Ben's Lakes allow kayaks in those? I know, I know Camp Burman's does, but I don't think any of them, does that.
I'm unsure, I don't know what that number would be.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, John?
She was asking what Ben's was.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, I would say that it's an all-purpose recreational park, right, not just a fishing park?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think, as always, it's not just.
Oh, I know, I know, but Alexandria is a, so, I know.
Did you have something, Justin, or are you just stretching?
Was it one or two persons?
One person.
One person.
I think the win for the folks, right, is for $5 an hour, you can go test your-
You can bring your own too, right?
Yeah, you absolutely can, yeah.
It doesn't work.
Yeah, right, it would be two years, if we find that it wasn't used or appreciated, or it was no longer a good idea, then we're not, not enough this year.
But your concern is based more on, you're worried about something happening to the kids, you're worried about the kids doing something stupid.
Or about fishing.
I mean, I think, honestly, because, I know there's a lot of people that they drop their kids off in the water, they do.
Yeah.
You know, they say, I'll be back in an hour or whatever, so, and with water, you never know, I'm just saying, so, and then, like, if there are people fishing out there and stuff like that, and like, get mad, I don't know, you know, so.
Just trying to understand your perspective.
So, I'm going to assume that some of the businesses pay for all the fees.
Well, yeah, and I would imagine, I mean, you have to have a payment method on your smartphone, right? And so, working at a credit card company, I know that it-
Their insurance level, you probably have like, some kind of grant, but assuming that if they're able to make you an offer, that that would be the goal for anybody regardless of the fee.
Well, you don't know that.
No, it's all about the business, because it's their responsibility.
You're right, it's their rental agreement.
You guys don't have any liability.
True.
So, whatever, I wouldn't figure out how many.
Yeah, it would be their rental agreement.
Like, there's a disclaimer that you agree to when you're ready, so I'm guessing that this will probably have the same thing.
I could only assume that, right? Yes, sir?
So, I know this sounds kind of like a dumb question, but I don't have the answer, but are they, like, there's kayaks where you just sit on top, and then the kayak you get down, and you know which ones are going to be, because I know that the ones that you have to get down in it, like, if there's something that flips, it might be harder
to get out of. To get out of the water, especially with a life jacket, you don't want that.
Judging by the pictures on their site, it looks like they're all set on top.
Perfect.
Thank you, Dan.
If we move forward with this, Mr. Duncan, the mayor and city clerk would still have time to look further into the contract before-
Yeah, the paperwork that they provided is a little bit skimpy, I'm going to, I'm going to draft something.
Okay.
To take care of some of these issues.
Gotcha, so we can discuss those further, but we can move forward with the resolution tonight, allowing them to pursue that?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution, with the understanding that Mayor Courtney and city clerk Rebecca McCour will pursue some concerns on that before we sign the contract.
But you're authorizing her to sign the contract?
Yes, absolutely.
Once we get those worked out?
Yep, whatever she sees in her judgment.
I'll second that.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Caleb Fluggie?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Resolution 2025-05, a resolution of the city of Walton, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to work with the city clerk and city attorney to create a job description, duties, and terms of employment for someone to oversee the management, operations, scheduling, and supervision of volunteers for the Walton Senior Center, to post, advertise, and hire an employee or contractor to provide the services, and to suggest any ordinances necessary or desirable to carry out, replacing the expired management agreement with the YMCA. Mr. Duncan?
Now, that was a mouthful, but it explains a lot about what's going on, and the whereas is, I'll explain the rest of it. Whereas the agreement between the city of Walton and the YMCA of Greater Cincinnati for management of the Walton Senior Center has expired and not renewed, and the last day of the YMCA's involvement will be May 16, 2025. Whereas the city wishes to hire someone to replace the YMCA, to manage the operation, scheduling, and the supervision of volunteers for the Walton Senior Center, so as not to disrupt the programs and services for our senior citizens. Now therefore, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to work with the city clerk and the city attorney to create a job description, duties, and terms of employment for someone to oversee the management, operations, scheduling, and supervision of volunteers for the Walton Senior Center, and further resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to post, advertise, and hire an employee or contractor to provide the services, and to suggest any ordinances necessary or desirable to carry out, replacing the expired management agreement with the YMCA. So because of the time constraint here, we need to go ahead and start advertising and let the mayor hire someone, we'll probably bring back to you some revisions to the, depending upon how it works out, whether it's a contractor or employee, for job descriptions, and maybe have to amend the budget, considering we're towards the end of the year, probably not, but we wanted to get something on the agenda, get it out in public, to have it all in the open, that we do need to hire somebody so that we can continue to operate the facility here that you're sitting in.
So this just really gives us permission to create the job requisition and to put it out, if you're willing to do that by motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution. Second. Dan Martin?
Yes.
Caleb Fluggie?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Okay, so, first reading of ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending Chapter 91 of the Walton Code of Ordinances by creating Section 91.50 therein, in order to require property owners to mow the grass and maintain landscaping and trees in the area between the sidewalk fronting their property and the street or road, and providing for code enforcement. Mr. Duncan?
All right, as indicated in the title, this would be a new ordinance in our Code of Ordinances, and it will read as follows, this is all new language. It shall be the duty of each and every person, firm, corporation, or company owning lots or real estate, fronting and abutting on any publicly dedicated street or road in the city, to mow all grass up to the publicly dedicated street or road, including all grass located in the public right-of-way, and to maintain any landscaping or trees in that area at his, her, or its own expense, so far as the publicly dedicated road fronts or abuts upon his or her or its lots or real estate. Excessive growth of weeds or grass, including but not limited to the existence of any noxious weeds, vegetation, landscaping, or trees and grass in excess of a height of eight feet, eight inches, sorry.
Eight feet.
That'd be some tall grass. Or any such vegetation, landscaping, or tree that encroaches upon the sidewalk or public right-of-way, or interferes with the line of sight on the street or road in this above-identified area, shall be considered a public nuisance. And the owner of the lots or real estate fronting and abutting the publicly dedicated street or road and public right-of-way shall be subject to code enforcement ordinances as set forth in Sections 34.65 through 34.77 of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances. This was proposed by Councilmember Gaskell, in, I guess, reaction to, there are a lot of areas in town where you've got that four-foot strip between the street and the sidewalk, and some people aren't maintaining that area, they're letting it get overgrown and so on, and this should take care of this. This was modeled after one that we have out in Alexandria, another city that I'm the attorney for. So that's the first reading, and you all don't have to, but you typically do vote on first reading to determine whether or not to go forward with the ordinance, so you can do that now if you'd like by motion.
I motion to move forward with it.
Second.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Caleb Fluggie?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
First reading of ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending ordinances 2020-09, 2021-03, 2022-04, in Section 35.01 of the City of the Walton Code of Ordinances, in order to adopt and approve revisions to the city's personnel policies, employee handbook, by terminating the city vehicle home fleet regulations. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just by summary, this ordinance will modify our procedures for the city vehicles. Currently, there is a provision in the personnel policies handbook that says anyone hired after 2020-09, which was an ordinance back in 2020, will be available to have a home fleet vehicle to take home if they live within the city limits or within 15 miles of the city limits. This ordinance will delete that provision and require the employees to bring the city vehicle back to the city garage at the end of every shift and leave the keys there for the next day's work. And as it indicates in the title to the ordinance, if adopted, this ordinance would abandon or terminate the city vehicle take-home fleet program. So, that's the first reading, again, you can discuss this and vote on it if you'd like.
I motion, I'm going to move forward with it.
My second.
Dan Martin?
I'm going to abstain.
Caleb Fluggie?
Yes.
Amy Long?
No.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Okay, that's three to one to one, so it'll go on the future agenda for second reading.
And first reading of ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending Section 72.05 of the Walton Code of Ordinances, in order, clarify, when motor vehicles shall be removed from streets and roads during a snow emergency. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. That Section 72.05 addresses snow emergencies in the city. It starts out with language that said pursuant to provisions of KRS 39.409, I guess it's a housekeeping measure, I looked up that statute, and it's been repealed for a while, so I'm suggesting we take that language out of our ordinance. The ordinance basically allows the mayor to declare a snow emergency when there is snowfall of two inches or greater. This ordinance, the main reason for this ordinance is, we're adding the language, if the snowfall is predicted to accumulate to two inches or greater, that's when the American declare the emergency, and people will have to start getting the cars off the streets and roads. So that's, that's the summary, and again, you can vote on this if you'd like.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Caleb Fluggie?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
And that leads us to council comments, we'll start with Councilwoman Long.
I don't have anything, thank you all for coming.
Councilman Fluggie?
No comment.
Councilwoman Beach?
No comment.
Councilwoman Gaskell?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Martin?
Thank you all for coming, it's good to have a good discourse about what's going on, and hopefully we can get some things settled out.
I concur, thank you, it's nice to have a room full of our citizens, and we will address the issues that you all have brought, and thank you for coming here to just share your opinion and how we can troubleshoot and fix that. Everyone have a good evening, look forward to seeing you at the Easter egg hunt and the opening of the lake.
And there are cupcakes, I'm going to take some cupcakes. Well, honey? Dan Martin?
You can have a cupcake earlier.
Dan.
Oh, what?
Voting on a German.
Oh, sorry, we're talking about cupcakes.
Sorry?
Yes, I'm a German.
Caleb Fluggie?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
I didn't hear, I'm just.
Are these yours?
No, they're, 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 they're.
I need to make sure I'm more hospitable.